Call town of Wapageo, planning board meeting to water. Can we all rise for a pledge to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The cameraman's not here?
Yeah.
No, it's on. It's on. Yep. Okay. All right, so...
Thank you, though.
Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening... Oh, sorry, hold on, let's go back. Need a roll call attendance for the secretary, please?
Mr. Siro, Mr. Freino, Mr. Saki, Mr. Laranacho, Mr. Paratycos, Mr. Muselli, Mr. Flawer.
Here. Okay, all the board members have received the minutes from the November 1st meeting.
I'll make a motion to second minutes.
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, our first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing regarding the Price ground-mounted six solar panel addition. Entertain a motion to open a public hearing?
So made.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, is there anyone here... Is there anybody in the hallway there?
Some price.
Okay. I guess not, so... Is there anyone here for the Price ground-mounted solar?
One of Mr. Price's here.
Well, I'm Mr. Price. You're Mr. Price? Okay. All right, so you don't have anybody coming tonight from...
She was supposed to be here, from Infinity.
I'm just gonna make sure she's not sitting there.
Okay. You go ahead and do that.
She called me today and said she'd be here, so...
Okay. He's going to check to make sure. No? Okay. All right, so... Okay, so the applicant's... The applicant's consultant's not here. At this point, I guess we don't really need a full presentation. I mean, it's a... As per the published description, the applicant's only adding six.
Can we just get to Torres and then...
We could go do that. I don't know, Torres is an engineer, just...
I'm here.
You're here? Okay. All right, so let's move this to the end of the agenda, then. Okay. Can we need a... So our next item would be the Torres ground-mounted solar panels. Need a motion to go ahead and open that public hearing?
So made.
Motion's made.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We have... Just give us a brief description of what you're looking to do?
So, we got a ground-mounted solar panel.
Come on up.
Coming on Mr. Torres' property, which is a long driveway goes back end, beautiful property. But I think we've done everything that the board has asked us to have done up to this point. Recently, we just sent out the certified mail to all the neighbors and so forth, and put up the sign. And I think this is the last thing we have to carry through.
Okay.
We're ready to go when you are.
Okay, all right, well... Okay, well, we're gonna open up the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak regarding the Torres ground-mounted solar panels? Okay. Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so...
There was nothing else last night? I thought there was something else.
No, that was the only thing that we had for them.
Okay.
Might be the other application you're thinking of.
Yeah, maybe.
Okay, so... So you've received the resolution as produced by the planner?
I guess our project manager has.
Okay, there was no questions or concerns regarding the resolution as it was prepared?
None at all.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, so I guess at this point, it's just a vote on the resolution of approval, or somebody wants to make a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Okay, so that's motion to approve? All right. Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so motion carries. All right, so you're all set? You've completed everything you need to complete with the planning board? Just check with the secretary, and she'll give you...
Peter's right.
Yep, she'll give you whatever you need to move forward.
Can I call you tomorrow?
I'll call you tomorrow, okay?
Okay.
Thank you very much, folks.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Have a nice night.
You're welcome, have a good night. Okay. All right, so that one's done. Okay, we still don't have anybody here for Price. So let's move on to the next item on the agenda this evening, which is stage door self-storage amended site plan.
Good evening.
Yeah, good evening.
Following the last meeting, I went back and looked at the landscaping and the color of the building, which were the two items that were outstanding.
Okay.
Being that we were coming right back in two weeks, we didn't have time to submit anything. The board agreed at the meeting to hear what we gotta say, and then we'll make an official submission following the meeting.
Okay, so if you have something for us to look at?
So what I did is I took some photos, because that obviously is gonna tell, you know, a good story and... As well as like... The first thing that you can talk about is the color. I brought a sample of 950 to pass that around to Tom.
Okay.
Which is very similar to the color that it is now. And we would paint the... Shutters would be painted. I actually probably put on new shutters. If we are talking about even replacing those windows, they're in bad shape. But they would be replaced in time.
Okay, so you replace the windows, and they'll still be the darker color. Was it brown now?
Green.
They're green now?
Dark green.
Okay.
But there are, as you can see, there's only three window units.
Yep, yeah, so just pretty much they're gonna get blocked off anyway, for the most part.
So that's the colors. You know, we're looking to kind of keep it consistent with what it is, just clean it up. And I know there was a question from Ralph regarding the end. On the end of the building, you can see that in... It's the second page, this part of the building here.
Okay. It's at the back of the...
The way we see it is the siding's consistent with the rest of the building. And that would be painted in the system that's building. And really what that is, is a loading dock behind there. And what that does is it shields Route 9.
From the loading dock?
From the loading area.
Yeah.
Looking to keep that. And there is an overhang, which, you know, if they're in bad weather, find some cover on that back door. So those are the colors, and that's what we're looking to do. And I would open up the comments regarding that.
What is the new landscaping?
I'll get into that in a minute. Do you want to finish up the color?
I think it's just the color, though. I think the color's nice, but I think the color on the windows changed. Maybe they can do something else just to dress up the front of the building? Just by slapping a coat of paint and having the windows change, it's really aesthetically pleasing when you're driving down the road, coming in to walk in.
Yeah, I mean, it's a warehouse-type building, and we're looking to do storage. And we're really looking to keep it...
Well, if you look at the other storage companies around, then...
Yeah, definitely nice.
You know, they have brick facades.
Yeah.
They make their buildings pretty attractive. This thing here is like a sword bomb. When you're going up Route 9 and you're looking at this structure, this is not what everybody wants to really look like, even if you paint it.
I do understand that, but, you know, this was approved, and...
We understand, but this is why we're here today.
So what... How far do we... Are we going with this?
Well, we only want to look at, you know, the two sides that's gonna be fronted to Route 9. And that's what we're gonna discuss right now, is what we'd like to see. I would like to see some type of... Something done with it. And I still think the texture 111 area needs to be adjusted.
Yeah.
So, you know, either a stucco design added in there, something to break it up and make it more attractive.
Okay, so... I'm just trying to figure...
The whole thing, we're definitely up, but... Let him come up with a design.
Yeah.
Yeah. Something's gotta be done on there, because, I mean, it looks like a big rust bucket.
Something with the entranceway or something like that, a little more attractive, but...
And being that we don't have any landscape to really look at. See if it breaks this up.
Well, we're getting into the landscaping. I took pictures. Unfortunately, the leaves now are off the trees. Where it looks a lot better in the summertime, when the leaves are on the trees. But there is landscaping. And we're kind of... I only colored up on this plant here. I colored up the property. So as you can see, I think there was some discussion about putting landscaping in front of the parking lots, which is in the state right of it. Because the property line actually runs right along the edge of the parking lot, and in the front. So we're really limited on what we can do.
That's all the more reason to decorate the building up a little bit.
You're gonna have to focus on the building and not the landscape.
Yeah, if you can't do anything with that, then let's make the building look more stuff.
Okay. So we're looking at for sections on the building?
I don't know, you guys can...
Oh, he said like...
I just, I don't wanna go in the wrong direction.
All right, so... What do we want to do?
So in terms of giving... Let's give them a little bit of... Let's give a little direction, some... What type of features would you like to see? Because obviously, I mean, you know, there's the windows that are there, basically are false windows at this point.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, he's gonna replace them, but, you know, they're really a serving of no purpose. Do we... Is there... Do you want to see something, some type of feature going down to make it look like there's windows on the outside? You know, the entranceway, I mean, I don't know...
More like a faux brick, like a wing's cot, chair rail, whatever the hell it's called, that goes like halfway up the building.
Like a table, like a...
Right.
I agree, that would look nice.
Like a water table going around?
Exactly, that completely surrounds all four sides of the building.
No, just do the two. We don't need the two sides.
Just do the visual.
Yeah, the two to face right now.
Behind them, behind them's the industrial park, anyway.
Gotcha.
I mean, it's, you know, nobody's up there other than the warehouses that are there now.
Yeah.
You know, and then the other side is...
You're talking like a four-foot, five-foot?
It's not even four to five feet. It's more like 32 inches is standard. That's what it is with, you know, interior...
You wanna see it?
Residential bathrooms, foyers in residential homes. You could do the same exact thing.
Does it have a three?
Or maybe put it at the base of that window.
Right, two to 36.
Elevation.
You don't want it too... You don't want it at the 50th percentile, because then it's not gonna look quite right. It's gonna look like it's overkillin' it.
You know, Rob?
You know what I mean?
And I don't have an issue adding windows.
Yeah.
You know, we could add some...
Maybe a little false gable over the entranceway.
Yeah, something.
Something that contrasts with the top.
Like a dark...
So it's not dark at the bottom part.
Maybe some kind of little false gable over the entranceway or something?
Something, maybe.
Yeah. Well, we're still using the front entrance as the main entrance to the building, or...
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, ultimately, most of the use is gonna be in the back.
Going through the loading area?
Through the loading area.
In the back center of the building?
Yep. And this is not gonna, you know, you're not gonna really see that much of foot around.
Right.
You know, on a normal basis.
I think what everybody's worried about is the first thing you see when you enter the town of Wapageo, so it's, you know, the ugly scene around there right now.
That's the first thing you see.
I understand that.
Okay.
So maybe, like you said, wings go along the bottom, just about the bottom of the windows, and those two sides, different color, different texture.
So you want something like a... What are we agreeing on? On some type of brick, or...
A faux brick.
A faux brick, yeah. Because I was gonna say that might be something...
Cauldron stone, something that's...
Yeah, something cheap, doesn't have to be expensive.
Yeah.
Little shelf, yeah.
Patrick is extremely attractive.
Paint it?
Right, keep the metal painted. I was just thinking, there's options to, you know, what they could put on the metal portion of the building. You know, if they do it in a... You know, they attach something to it.
It looks like an updated color, too, on the top. On the front side, is that a canopy there? Halfway down the building?
No, that's...
I can't really tell.
That's a sign. That's the...
Oh, that's a sign?
Little sign, yeah.
That's coming off?
Over the top.
We're not proposing to take it off.
Sorry, over the bushes, yeah.
If we would come in for a sign for a minute, who would know? Name of the tenant, if I would take this over.
Yeah, we need lighting.
I hate to tell you this, but detection 111's really gotta... Something's gotta be done. It just doesn't fit in with the rest of the building.
I looked at it today, too. I didn't see that it really stood out from the rest of the building.
Always in the back.
Still has the same vertical lines.
Oh, yeah, I can see it. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is there lighting in the apartment?
I always think that was a lot of dishes.
Is there a light? Yeah, it's all existing.
Well, what I can do there is then just take that off and get metal siding to match the rest of the building.
Yeah.
It's a couple of panels on the building.
I mean, that's something I could do.
What was it, an area?
Metal siding.
Just take about, take off 211.
Metal siding over the 211.
Metal line.
Just the metal siding, the match, and then the...
Yeah, I mean, that would...
Well...
Yeah, I think that would be, yeah, that would be a compromise there to have to rip it all off, just make it all continuous down in the metal.
Yeah, I don't... We had purchased this building after it was built and used by State Street Furniture.
Okay.
We have yet been able to use it.
All right.
One example of the faux brick that I think you'll find especially attractive is on the dumper building that's on Route 9, right here in Wapageo.
Yep.
It's like the lower... You know, standard is 32 inches, so we've got it up. Extremely attractive, gives the building a really, really nice look at the drive through, especially I noticed when I was at it. Just an idea for yourself.
Okay.
It is a little labor-intensive, but to install it, but it does, it's forever. And it's lightweight. Kind of like a composite, sort of like a Trex deck, where the composite is through and through. It's a solid... It's a solid material.
I'll go check that out.
Anything other than the... Other than the brick on the bottom? He makes the siding... Change the texture 111 to the metal siding to be consistent.
Maybe we look at a couple different colors to that concrete and the brick better.
Yep.
Something a little bit more modern, that goes with the rest of it.
Okay.
Do you think anything with the entranceway?
Something.
Because that's... Points right at you.
Can you do a mansion or something over top of that, or a little gable over top of that? I think, well, just to break it up.
It's something we could look at.
I just gotta be...
Just gotta be careful with that, with snowdrift.
I understand.
Because you end up... You understand?
Creating a... Right, you're gonna end up creating an additional load that's not... That roof's not designed for.
Correct.
Yeah.
Just over top of that little area there, you got a pretty good support right there. You could just take a look, maybe a little break or something in there.
Look at some type of... Some type of like parapet-type thing, or a roof, or...
Adds a little disaster to that entry to it.
Okay.
Is there lighting in that block?
There is.
It's existing lighting right now.
You can actually see the pole. Right on the front page.
Right in the front?
Yeah.
Actually, the one pole that got it.
And that's... Lighting's gonna be there all night? People just gonna get their stuff, or what?
It's gonna be low lighting.
Do people have access anytime they want?
Yes. This is an industrial street.
Okay. So anything else that... Those three things, you really... You want to propose a couple of alternate colors on the paint?
Yeah, depending if you go with brick or stone or whatever.
Okay.
A lot of grays. Blueish gray down there.
All right, so that's it at this point?
And then the landscaping?
Well, yeah, so with landscaping, I mean, I mean, looking at the pictures, what's everybody's feeling? Because I could see the... I mean, you have the one which you're... The parking lot, pretty close to the total 9.
So you plan on using the existing signage that's there?
At this point, yep. And any change...
Is that sign in the front lit?
It is.
From the inside, right?
Not yet.
And you have a free standard sign.
So what's the feeling on the landscaping?
I think once the building is steadily...
Yeah, looks like...
So you think that was...
Satisfaction, I think the landscaping's gonna take care of itself, especially the fact that this picture is, you know, the picture is, you know...
Well, it's gonna be cleaned up.
Right.
Yeah, there's really nothing there right now, it's just...
Right, so if you improve... Right, so if you improve the visual on the building, then there really not an excessive need for landscaping, is what you're saying.
That's how I feel.
However, it should be cleaned up.
The guy is gonna be drawing the building first.
Okay.
This is the back, though, right?
The first page.
In the...
There was landscaping there. It was overgrown, filled with weeds, it was juniper, it was a disaster.
Yeah, basically, it looks like everything there is just overgrown.
And then, so what we did is we took that out, because we were having some drainage problems as well. With this plan, we're proposing to add landscaping in that area.
Okay.
I think that would be good, and just clean up what's there, that's all.
Yeah. All right, so you have... So you have this area, and then you also have one area proposed in the back, too?
Yes.
Okay.
I think you should fix the building first, and then see if we...
I think it's...
We adjust our...
I think that if he proposes the fixes, I think we're proposing for landscaping. Should be acceptable.
And I would like to get an approval for everything, and just...
Yeah, be done with it. No, I agree, it shouldn't... Should be a one-shot.
In the front of the building where that T-111 wall is, could you put like another strut down that way, the nice control arm? Are you having a problem?
Yeah, it looks like just like overgrown stuff. There's probably 32-inch building there, and then nothing in front of that. Ugly addition thing there.
Okay.
Tom, this is like a pride of Wapageo when you drive in. You guys gotta make a list, to make that stuff work.
Yes.
Need water and sewer, and we could do a lot.
No, I agree. I agree, that would be...
It's on the list.
It's been on the list for a long time, and really hope that we...
It's gonna be on the list a little bit longer.
Yeah.
I really hope that the town will do that, because water and sewer, especially this, this property here...
It would expand the...
We could really do a lot to make it more attractive.
Expand the usage of those properties drastically.
Yep.
Okay. All right, so put something together, just get it to us, and then we can kind of move forward.
Okay.
All right.
This is gonna... This is gonna take a little bit of time, because I don't get the architectural work done.
Okay.
So... Just make a decision.
If you get... You know, get it in ahead of the meeting, and then we could... I'm assuming we could put this on as an architectural review, so... More or less, right?
Yeah.
You know, similar to an architectural review, I mean, it's... So it's not like we have to put it out, you know, get it in a full month before the next meeting.
We're not doing a public meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
Wait, wait.
So, yeah.
So then we're good, yeah.
Yeah.
I just, it's gonna take, I just gotta...
It takes a little... This is probably not the only thing you're working on right now.
No.
Okay, all right, as soon as you can get it to us, we'll move forward from there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome, have a good evening.
Good night.
Okay. Okay. He's what?
I remember presenting myself.
You presented yourself, okay. You represented yourself, okay. All right.
I don't know where they were.
So let's, um, okay, so.
What are your problems?
So we're gonna, yeah, so, um.
We're still open.
Yeah, kinda. Yeah, we never closed it, so we're still open. So we're gonna go back to the price ground mounted solar six panel addition. So, why don't you go ahead, just give us a brief description of what you're, what you're looking to do?
Okay, so.
Yeah, we did.
We did originally, but we.
Open, open the door.
I don't know if we, yeah, we never closed it, we just opened the other one.
Then we went to the other one.
Yeah, so, okay, so the floor is yours.
Okay, so, from what I was under the impression is that you're saying that the solar panel installation could only be fifty percent of the footprint of the home? I believe that you're probably using the wrong footprint or wrong statistic. Um, I'm very, very familiar with the house. I've had it built. I put on the first edition myself. Um, and I have a second edition that was put on in probably late nineties, early two thousands. So the house itself on the upper floor, uh, cause it's terraced range, is twenty-six by forty-four. There's a sixteen by sixteen addition, two, two stories on the backside of the house. And then there's a twenty-five by thirty addition attached garage as well. The way I figured it myself, square footage, half, half of it, I should be able to go ahead and put fifty-five panels up. I only, I'm looking for thirty-six. I already have thirty.
Okay.
Uh, so, so that's what I understood to be the, the, the problem why it didn't get through the first time. Two weeks ago.
Yeah, it's actually a footprint of the house, not the square footage of the house.
I pay taxes on everything.
Yeah, so if you have a thousand square feet.
So what is it, what is it?
Two stories, you have a thousand square feet.
Right, so you have.
I'm not talking about stories, I'm talking living space upstairs. Just do that.
Right, so I mean, it's the, it's basically the, what you have on the ground, the footprint on the ground.
Okay.
That's, that's what the, the number, and it's fifty percent of that number is what you need. So, but you're saying that the garage is, you have a detached, is it detached garage?
No, it's attached.
It's attached, okay.
Everything's attached.
Okay.
One hundred percent.
So the numbers, so the numbers again were?
Twenty-five by thirty, on the one you said.
Okay.
Twenty-six by forty-four.
Twenty-six by forty-four, sixteen by sixteen.
About twenty-one fifty altogether square feet.
Twenty-five by thirty. Fifty total, okay.
And if you want, you could look at it from Google Earth.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's, those are good tools to just see what's there, but you can't measure off of it.
Well, if I come into what it is, but you could go ahead and see that it's all attached.
Yeah, okay, and then these, let's just see, cause they printed such a small version here.
Let's get seven hundred and twenty-five square feet with the proposals?
The old, the, the actual overall proposal?
The addition's on the six panels, so it's twenty, twenty-nine inches by sixty-three times six. I mean, that's. Another twenty square feet, maybe. I mean, that's using my head, I, I don't know.
So, I, I mean, the way I'm reading this, the submission from July ninth says there is one ground mounted array for a total of seven hundred and twenty-five square feet.
That's what I have now, thirty panels.
Okay.
And I want twenty percent more.
So she said, so currently it's seven hundred and, seven hundred and fifty square feet a panel?
Seven hundred and twenty-five square feet.
Seven twenty-five.
And it'd be ten sixty-five is the limit if those numbers are right.
Yeah.
Twenty-one thirty, right, ten sixty-five.
These panels are.
I think the twenty-nine by sixty-three, I think.
Yeah, I can't. My, my plan's very small, let's see the, uh.
Paul's got a bigger plan.
Yeah.
I think that's the latest that I have.
Yeah.
I mean, I think really your engineer needs to identify all of this on the plans that they're gonna submit.
I'm the homeowner, okay? I'm the one that's in fact, fact. I understand what you're saying, um.
He has to submit everything that.
I thought they did.
He needs to come across to us. And if he's leaving some numbers out, I mean, we can only go by what's he's done.
Numbers work out.
Yeah, just trying to figure out the. So he's got one.
He should've showed us that before.
Excuse.
He should've showed us that and what did you care for. We wouldn't be having this conversation.
I agree, a hundred percent. I agree. And, and Mrs. Agunti knows what I've been going through with, with this company.
So it gives you, all right, eight seventy would be the new number, with six panels. Yeah, so you're definitely under that, you're, you're under the, okay. So. Cause this is the, okay, so this, but he doesn't show the.
So I could show you where the, where the intended extra panels are gonna go.
Yeah.
We have that on the map.
No, we have it on it. It shows, it shows, right, it does show it on the.
I haven't seen it through the map.
Yeah, so I mean, he shows you putting it, let's, let's make sure that we're in the right, right spot here, so. It's the back of your house, you're putting six, six panels on the end.
Yep.
Okay, so I mean, that's not a, you know, apparently it's not an issue. The, now it seems like it's more of a, um. It takes out the equation of not needing a variance, but what we need to do is we need to get, um, the solar company to add that to the plan for the square footage. So they have to give you, you know, so they have to basically get the square footage, you have the footprint of your home, you know, put on here. Showing what the overall footprint is, and then that would give you the allowable area for solar panels. And then, uh, in return, obviously, the numbers we just calculated are under the fifty percent.
Yeah, no, I, I guarantee it's under fifty percent.
Right, so, which is, you know, which is good. Now, that saves you from having to go to the zoning board of appeals to get a variance, um, you know, due to our local, uh, and, uh, we can go from there.
So just, just to be clear, it's the, the square foot of the perimeter of your house, not the total square foot of your house?
It is the perimeter of my house.
Okay.
Right, that's what, yeah.
It's all connected, if this is.
Yeah, but if you have two stories, you're not including the second stories.
It's only one story, one level.
Okay, right.
You wanna double it, it's, it's another thousand square feet on top of it. I mean.
Okay, so, at this point, I think if we can get the, um, if you get the engineer to take care of that, that takes care of the variance issue. Other than that, um, I mean, really, I need a board.
Give him the resolution then?
Well, we gotta get the paperwork back first. We gotta get the, we gotta get the submittal complete back before we can authorize the resolution. But, tonight we're here in regard to the public hearing. I'm assuming nobody has any concerns with what's being proposed? I mean.
None.
Okay.
No.
We're gonna open up the floor, or is it, I don't know if you're here for this application, or?
Something else, it's not the agenda.
Huh?
Something else that's not on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay, so I mean, if there's no public.
I made a motion to close.
Well, hold on, so it comes into timeframe again, correct? So, we have to adjourn this out to another date. Unfortunately, because of the fact that we weren't prepared to, you know, we weren't prepared tonight that this was gonna be something that was gonna be resolved. We thought that tonight you were gonna have to go to the zoning board, get their, you know, variance from them, and then come back to us again. So the, the question comes back is, do you think that the solar company's gonna be able to turn something around quickly? So that we can go ahead and reconvene, close the public hearing, authorize the planner to write a resolution, and then move forward from there?
Sure, wouldn't you, wouldn't you need it?
So we have one week and then December sixth, but it's here.
Yeah.
So they have to get their butting gear.
Okay.
Basically. I'm as plain speaking as you get.
Well, let's, so what we'll do is, because it is, for what we're asking for is very minimal in nature for the application, for them to just add that information to the plan. Um, we'll adjourn, we'll, we'll go ahead and adjourn it to the, to the sixth, correct? Is that the date?
Set submission.
And then, now, if you have everything in by then, then we can meet on the sixth, and hopefully we're pretty well done at that point. Okay, all right, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn this public hearing until December the sixth.
Still made. Second.
Motion's made at second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, you're welcome.
Thanks.
Okay. All right. All right, so, with that said, we're at the, um, we're at the end of the agenda this evening. Is there any other information that we need to discuss this evening? No? Okay. All right, so with that said, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Do they have to?
Second.
All right.
Do they have to listen to what they're presenting, or?
I'll, if I, if I get a second. I just, we came to support, uh, we thought there was a discussion on the soccer field.
It's in the town board.
That's, that's not in the plan, but it's the town board, sorry.
Town board, it's in the other room.
Other room.
That's why we're stuck over here, cause they're in there.
And we're done.
I don't think it's on the agenda either, so I don't think we missed it.
Oh, okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. All right, so with that, we did have, let's go back to, we did have a motion to adjourn on a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.